This meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, August 12th, 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there was one item in our table file?
Yes, we have some information and it's basically, again, personnel items, additional appointments, increases, decreases, changes in assignment, and also an additional retirement resignation. So I'd like to have you add those to the consent agenda, please.
If there's no objection, we'll add that to the agenda as we move forward. Public comment, this is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? No? All right. We're going to move on to approval of minutes. Board members, you have in your packet two sets of minutes, the minutes from the regular school board meeting from July 8th, as well as the closed special school board meeting minutes from August 1st, which included the closed negotiation session. With that, I would ask for a motion, and with the second set of minutes, I would ask that the motion include a correction.
Right. And that correction is, it says that no one was absent, but I was absent. So I'd like to put Maple was absent.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve the July 8 minutes as presented, and to approve the August 1 minutes as corrected, and the correction is to strike, no one was absent and Maple was absent. So, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Announcements and recognition.
Okay, we do have a few this evening. First of all, Tom Grautman has asked us to announce that our local Ford dealers, once again, coming to Northfield High School, as they've done several times previously. Northfield High School and the Northfield Booster Club will be hosting a fundraising event at Memorial Field on Thursday, August 22nd, from 3:00 to 7:30. And again, it's an opportunity to test drive new cars, but with each test drive, the individuals who do a test drive basically earn a donation that's then given to the Northfield Booster Club of $20 per test drive. So it's been very, very successful over the last several years, and I think Tom is hoping that, again, a number of parents and community members will come out and take advantage and generate additional dollars for the Booster Club. Second, I'd like to congratulate Greenville Park and Bridgewater. They've received $4,000 grants for the Fuel Up to Play 60. Funding is provided by the Midwest Dairy Council. With the funds, Greenville Park will be purchasing a cold-pan serving counter. Students will be able to safely sample new fruits and vegetables during breakfast or lunch without these items being a component of the students' lunch, so to give them a chance to test out items they might otherwise be a little wondering whether they should try them or not. Fitness equipment will also be purchased, as well as marking paint, cones, paper, and artwork. And Bridgewater also will be purchasing physical education equipment for each academic wing. Also, a menu board with MyPlate on it will be purchased, as well as new serving pans and new utensils. So, again, these grants have been very helpful in terms of supporting child nutrition in both of these buildings, and we've been successful, again, over the last several years in hooking at these Fuel Up to Play 60 grants. Also, shout out to, actually, the Northfield News in helping to get this to happen. We had an article in the 2013 Portraits Edition published on July 31st about Joe Jorgensen, the coordinator of the work-based learning program, and it ended up being picked up by the National Council of Exceptional Children, who was their lead story at the national level on August 2nd. So, again, really good public information out there to not only our community, but also the national community about a high-quality work-based learning program. So those are the announcements that I have for this evening.
Very good. Board members, any others? Julie?
Yeah, I just have one. I wanted to recognize Kathryn Schmidt, who is an AmeriCorps Promise Fellow with our Torch Program, and she put together a wonderful Zumba event outside the White Center that raised $700 for Northfield Youth Sports Collaborative. So that's a lot of money that will really be used by kids to participate in youth sports programs. So in addition to thanking the several Zumba instructors who put together, it was a very fun class, but also Carlton College, Just Foods, and Econo Foods for their donations, and then also to many others who helped make this such a successful event. It was really fun.
Other announcements? No? All right. We are ready to move on to our first item for discussion report, which is the location equity revenue and board-approved referendum revenue, which is going to be presented by Matt Hillman.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about some exciting things from the legislature. And so basically, what we're here to talk about tonight is that during our last legislative session, the legislature came up with two new financial strategies that were created for school districts. The first is something that's called location equity revenue, and there's also a school board-approved levy of up to $300 per pupil. These are two brand-new financial strategies that the legislature has shared with us and given us some opportunities. So what we want to talk about first is location equity revenue, because I think it was one of those surprise moments right after the legislative session ended. And basically, according to the authors of the bill, location equity revenue is designed to offset larger costs that are associated with running metro school districts and also larger out-of-state school districts. And in order to receive location equity revenue, it can be one of two criteria, that you have to have at least part of your district, any portion of it, located within the seven-county metropolitan area. So Northfield, of course, we have quite a small portion in Dakota County, or schools need to be outside of the seven-county metropolitan area and have more than 2,000 students. So those are the two ways that you can get to it. So some districts, like Northfield, who have all or some of them, we get $424. So the metropolitan, seven-county metro area schools, any piece of land in there, basically get $424 per student in local equity revenue. School districts outside the seven-county metropolitan area have 2,000 or more students are eligible for the $212 per pupil in location equity revenue. And the dollars are provided as categorical funding. This is interesting. They're provided as categorical funding, similar to the manner that we get operating capital or health and safety or several other categorical funding components. And what you'll notice is that the funding for location equity revenue, it's a mix of state aid and local property tax, and it actually reduces a school district's voter-approved operating levy by a corresponding amount. So for example, here in Northfield, when you look at the, we have, of course, our operating levy includes the inflationary component, and so if you were to look at ours this year, it's approximately $1,656 per pupil. By accepting location equity revenue, we'll reduce our voter-approved levy by $424 per pupil, and that will be converted to the categorical state funding. The official voter-approved levy would drop to around $1,232. In the end, we get the exact same amount of money from the state as we would have before, the exact same amount of money, but basically, we're going to have slightly less in property taxes because of some additional legislative changes to state equalization. So for example, according to the runs that we received from Tom Meltzer at Department of Education, a home in Northfield with a residential market value of $150,000 would save approximately $130 in property taxes. Now, that's not a lot, but it's also not going up, which is a positive thing. We think that when we're getting the same amount of money and our local property taxpayers are going to pay a little bit less, we look at that as a positive piece. One of the pieces that could be, that you're probably going to see, that this could allow some metro districts who are previously at the levy cap, and you know we are at the levy cap right now, would allow some districts, would allow districts who are at the cap to go back to their voters and request additional operating levy dollars. And of course, that's because the cap, the law for the cap has remained the same, but when you remove that $424 or $212 off of your operating levy, you drop below the cap, and you could go back to your voters and ask for more. We need to be very clear that that is not the plan in Northfield. Very clear that that is not the plan in Northfield. You know, we asked for 10 years, you know, at the cap with the inflationary rate, and we have built great trust with our public, and that is our intent at this time, for as long as possible to maintain that promise. And so we got to be clear, we're not planning to take that route. In fact, the board doesn't have to take any action in order to get the location equity revenue. Really what the deal is, is that if you want to opt out, you would actually have to take action to that effect by September 1st of every, any year. We could actually, a district could choose to take it one year, and the following year could take action and choose not to take it. The department's really advising people not to do that, because in a lot of cases, through some interesting state calculations, there are many districts, including Northfield, who could potentially lose some money because of equalization, or excuse me, because of equity aid, and we would actually see a loss of about $76,000 due to the way that the state calculates equity aid and how if a bunch of districts in a region take the location equity revenue, their operating levies would drop, ours would be out of whack, and you would receive less equity funding. So they're advising every district to go ahead and accept that. And so location equity revenue is a piece that took probably about a month to sort all out in the end, because even when Dr. Meltzer, Tom Meltzer, went back, and they had approved some things that they needed some clarification on, that they weren't actually, the legislators who passed, that weren't exactly sure what they had meant at the time. So the department got that all sorted out, and we now have location equity revenue, a brand-new thing here. Are there any questions that I can answer on location equity revenue? Because there's another fun and exciting piece that we want to share with you as well.
John?
Does the location equity revenue reduction of the levied amount, does that affect, does that affect, then, the inflationary rate going forward? Because as I recall, part of the reason for going at the cap was instead of levying at a specific amount, the amount we could levy if necessary would continue to rise by an inflation-adjusted amount. So should we need to levy more in the future, does our cap remain consistent with inflation, or does it stay now stuck at this new level?
When we drop that down below, I've not heard anything that has said that we would not continue with the inflationary factor. So we would still see the inflationary factor on the approximately $1,230, I think it is, if I just look back, at $1,232. As we move forward, that will now rise with inflation as well. So there's nothing with this particular, when we get to the $300 operating levy that the board, or the $300 levy that the board can approve, there's an issue with inflation there. But in this case, we've not heard anything that would have said that we will not continue forward with the inflationary factor.
So effect, accepting these funds or not rejecting them?
Correct. Exactly.
Does not really impact our funding negatively in any ways, what you're telling us?
That is absolutely correct. They've shown us runs for a couple of years and have gone pains, there's a whole bunch of other things that are happening at the state in terms of, there's some adjustment of how they're calculating pupil units and those pieces, and they've gone to great pains to show us that we're getting the exact same amount of money as we had before, at least, if not a little bit more in some cases.
Thank you.
I think just a couple of pieces too, John, is that in terms of looking at the location equity revenue, the idea is that when you move from the cap back to a smaller number, then you increase the amount of equity funding that you receive. Again, equity funding does not give us one more dollar to spend on kids, but it does reduce the amount of the dollars that come from property tax by about $76,000. So it's actually beneficial to allow the location equity revenue to be implemented because it actually changes the balance of how much comes from state aid and how much comes from local property tax. The number that Matt also gave you a little bit earlier in terms of kind of the reduction, I believe was the reduction both for the impact of the location equity revenue and for the fact that the first $300 of operating levy is supercharged in terms of dollars. So it's those two pieces together. The other thing I just framed for you, having sat through the last night and day, and Sunday of the day before the end of the session, this was added into the bill on Saturday night at 1:30 in the morning, and was inserted by a couple of legislators, one from the West Metro and one from Minneapolis. Up to that point, this had not surfaced at all, and in fact, other legislators did not want to see this particular location equity revenue put in at this time, because there were a lot of concerns about exactly how it would work. And that's why it's taken us kind of a month to sort out the pieces, because even when they voted on it, they didn't really, they really weren't sure how it was going to play out. And there was a question at one time whether you could stack the levies and have both levies in place, whether you had to take one levy or the other. And so until they could sort all those pieces out, we didn't feel we could come to you and kind of even talk about this particular piece. But we now do think we have kind of all the answers. And I think the bottom line is, as we talk to our good friends at the Northfield News, is not one penny more of money for kids, but significant reduction for our taxpayers in terms of what they have to pay because of increases in state aid and increases in equity funding.
I think Julie had her hand up.
One clarification, the $130, did you say that was on an average? Did you give the value of the home?
Yep. The average would be on a home of $150,000. According to the state runs, they would pay approximately $130 less, and then, and this is for FY '15. And then on a $100,000 home, that particular home would pay about $87 less.
Okay. And then one other question. So as this categorical funding exists as long as this legislative, the Biden, so we come along and the legislators adjust the categorical funding or completely do away with it, we still maintain our levy authority of $1,600, whatever?
That is correct. And in fact, something we'll be talking with you about probably down the line, is as they change the pupil weightings, you are going to see down the line, our levy looked larger than what it was, you know, at one point, but it's actually the same amount of money in terms of they're just, we're starting to see with that FY '15, the change in the pupil weighting, when we go to all-day kindergarten. And so there's going to be some formulas that you've seen in the past that we've been used to for a long time that are going to be changing, and we'll be bringing some of that information back to you as time goes along.
Bill?
Matt, the legislature could reverse this in the next session.
Absolutely.
So the taxpayers need to be, I noticed that depending on the legislature's wishes, this may be a one-year reduction.
That very well could be the case. And as we know, the legislature has been able to change their mind on a number of occasions, and very possible.
State policy.
Yes.
That's exactly right.
What I would say, though, to you is that in terms of moving it into a categorical funding stream, we have not seen that happen in the past. Every categorical that's been put in over the last 20 years, we still are living with.
So sticks.
Yeah. And so it is, it is not very likely that, once they put it into this categorical formula, that it's going to be taken out. Now, the only thing that could happen, I think, might be the ratio of how much comes from state aid versus how much comes from property tax. We saw that with the operating capital budget a few years ago, where at one time, almost all of our operating capital came from state aid. Now, a major chunk of our operating capital comes from property tax levy. So that would be the place, it would not be probably the elimination of that particular piece, but it would be, there might be some manipulation of the percentages coming from property tax or state aid.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, it was a surprise to many people, and we've been learning a lot about it over the last month. So the second part of this, that the legislature, unless there are any, you can keep asking questions about the local equity revenue as we move forward too, but the other part of this, again, another new piece, is that school boards now have the ability independently to authorize up to a $300 per pupil board-approved levy. So you can either do a new levy, or you could convert part of your existing voter-approved levy, again, up to $300. And so this is something new, school boards before have not had the ability to do an operating levy at their own discretion, but now they can. We know that there are districts that are poised to do this. We've all read about the districts like North Branch, who have struggled for a long, long time to get any kind of voter-approved levy. This gives those school boards an avenue to be able to work to provide some additional dollars to educate the children in their community. It is a five-year, so you can go up to five years on this particular one, and it is renewable. This one, to my understanding, is not part of the, there's not an inflationary factor with the $300 piece. And the other component here is the fact that the first $300, regardless of whether we were to convert or not, the first $300 of that levy is still supercharged in terms of the equalization. So whether we were to choose to convert ours or not, we would still get the exact same amount of equalization funding in terms of that. One of the pieces, though, that we'd also like to mention is the fact that we really, at this point, we're not recommending that we convert any of our existing levy for several reasons, one of which, this is a cap of five years. Our current levy goes out further than that. And again, ours, our voters have been generous to us a number of times, and we feel that leaving what they have put in place at this time is the reasonable course of action for the district. But there are a number of districts that will convert some of this levy for a number of different reasons. And so again, brand-new, for the first time, you could choose to convert some of our existing levy, or a district that had less than that could approve up to $300 on that, or a district that has nothing could approve up to $300. So again, it's an interesting piece, and what we're recommending here is that we do not convert any of it for the reasons that I've outlined. And it's a pretty straightforward piece, there's not much more to it than that. So if there are any questions on the board-approved levy concept, I'd be able to have it. And the key thing to understand there is that there's no advantage to converting any of our existing voter-approved levy for the equalization piece. We get that higher rate, as Dr. Richardson calls it, the supercharged tier of equalization, we get that regardless of whether we are converted or not. So at this point, we don't see a good reason to do the conversion. Any questions?
Board members? John?
So is there, I guess, I heard a couple of things in there about there's some more matching money that comes with this than with $300 of voter-approved levy, or?
The, on the first $300 of either of those levies, the amount that will come from the state as opposed to local property taxes will be higher. I didn't bring the, you've got the number in your head, Chris.
In my head, yeah.
But $300 of board-approved levy and $300 of voter-approved levy counts the same.
Will generate the same amount.
Correct. The mix is the same.
So it makes, it makes no functional difference.
Right.
Correct.
And that was the concept that we really needed to probe with Tom, to say, you know, is there some reason, are we not going to get the supercharged level if it's all voter-approved? He said it makes absolutely no difference. It is whatever your first $300 of levy is, whether it's voter-approved or board-approved, it's at the supercharged level. And to give you an idea of the power of that, if we think about last year and the amount of state equalization dollars we got, we got about 2% of that first $300 was paid for in terms of state aid. The other 98% was paid for by local property taxpayers. This coming year, as this is implemented, will go to 48% of that first $300 will be paid for by the state. And again, it's, this is what has been one of the main pushes for schools for equity and education over the years, is trying to move to the point where it is, does not, our taxpayers, in order to generate levies, do not have to spend a lot more to generate the same amount of levy. And that has been the problem over the years, is that when we wanted to generate a levy of $200, it cost us twice as much as it cost a resident in Hopkins or a Dyna to generate the same $200 of operating levy on the same price home. So this really brings that equalization up, which again, for the third time.
Yeah. And we're going to say it four times.
Will definitely impact our property taxpayers in terms of reducing property taxes in terms of the referendum, but will have no impact on the new money that we have available to educate our children.
And by us, you mean the taxpayers, not the district itself, right? The cost falls more heavily on the taxpayers.
On the taxpayers in our district. And, you know, we shared that during the last two levy campaigns about the fact that our taxpayers really had to reach deep because it costs them more to generate the same amount of levy. And this, at least now in the first $300, really is to the point of being fully equalized, so that the impact on our taxpayers from the first $300 and taxpayers in any other district is exactly the same, which is great.
And I think, I think it's a good time to review in this because of the efforts of this, is that we probably remember, we showed you that C video here, probably a year ago, about the pizza shop. And that's a, if you're talking to people after something like this comes out about equalization and those kinds of pieces, and, you know, what it means for one district to get the same amount of levy as the other, but the local property taxpayers pay something very different, that pizza video is a great one to point people to, because I think it puts it in real terms, because equalization and all those kinds of levy things are late-night bedtime reading for a lot of people that, you know, put people to sleep, but it's real. I mean, it really, it certainly depends on your zip code in Minnesota, you know, in terms of the kind of funding that your local district gets. So that pizza video is a great one to watch for that. I think that, I was reminded of that several times here. So I think the important piece is that, as a board, we don't have to take any action. There are a lot of school boards you're going to be reading about who have to take action or really having some debate. Our recommendation to you is that we do not take any action to reject the local equity revenue, that we let that roll. We're recommending that you not take any action to convert any of our current voter-approved levy to board-approved levy. But the key thing to remember, too, is that we can do those actions every year. So if at some point we were to have a situation that would make sense to do one of those two components, we can certainly do it, if we do it by September 1st of each year. So we can ride it out, and if at some point that's an option that we'd like to pursue, we can certainly do it. And again, you know, I think it's just really important, we're going to get the exact same revenue as we've been in the past, but the portion coming from state aid will increase, and the portion coming from property tax will decrease. And we think that that's a good news piece for Northfield taxpayers. May I stand for any further questions?
Any other questions?
Thanks, Matt.
You bet.
It sounds like we've got a good plan for saving the taxpayers a little bit of money and keeping all the funding steady. All right. We are ready to move on to our second item, which is Matt talking about the procurement card expansion.
So if you recall, it was July a couple of years ago, where the board here approved a P-card program. And what is a P-card? P-card is essentially a, essentially it's a credit card program where the district receives rebates. It's a lot like getting airline miles or whatever is the rewards that you get, the 1, 2, 3 at your gas pump and the grocery store and those kinds of pieces. So it's very similar to that. The board approved us to do a procurement card program with our cabinet-level administrators being assigned our cards to begin with. And so we're not getting a ton of, we're not getting a ton of rebate, but we're starting to see more and more. So basically, the program has provided principals and other cabinet members with greater flexibility and is streamlined a number of processes. For example, an individual with a P-card no longer has to make appropriate school-related payments out of their own pocket and wait to be reimbursed. So for example, when a principal goes to one of their state principal conventions, or they want to pay for a group of people to go to a convention, they no longer have to use their own credit card or pay some of those things that you normally would have had to pay out of your pocket and get reimbursed. That's really a positive thing. And then what's really good too is that the cards also have the district's tax-exempt ID number, so it makes, we try to get that tax exemption as often as we can, and when it's right on the card, it's really pretty straightforward in terms of for folks to do that. So the P-card year spans September 1st, August 31st, and basically, this table illustrates what we've gotten back. Again, we're not talking money that the district is going to get rich off of, but in our first year, which was a partial year, we got nearly $500 back. In 1112, we got about $1,500 back, and in 1213, we're projecting to get $5,000 back. Now again, not a lot, but it's better than a sharp stick in the eye. And so the key thing that I want you to know is the fact that we're working, we really worked hard with our biggest vendors. These are people who we would have paid regardless and not have gotten anything back. And so when you think about our XL Energy bill and the CenturyLink bill, and the kinds of things that we buy from Pearson and McGraw-Hill for our curriculum, these are things that we would have purchased anyway, and we've done a lot of work, our business office folks have done a lot of work to have these companies accept the P-card, because again, it simplifies the transaction on the company's part, and we get a rebate. So just, you know, so far with XL Energy, we've spent, we've paid a half million dollars of our bills with them. Again, that's a bill we would have paid regardless, but now we're getting something back. Sprint, we've had about $20,000. CenturyLink, about $20,000. Sprint, we've had about $20,000, CenturyLink about $20,000, Cole Papers about $27,000, McGraw-Hill about $60,000. And so what we want to report to you is that the program's been very successful. We've been very impressed with the company. We have, we've had one situation where there was an attempt of a fraudulent charge on one of our cards and apparently it was some kind of purchase of cellphones or something like that. The company was very impressive in terms of how they shut that down and how it did not disrupt our ability to use it. We were very pleased with that because if you've ever had a situation where you've had a fraudulent, so a couple of years ago, someone tried to buy tickets to India on my credit card and the hassle that you have to go through to shut that down. And they were very accommodating, they got it taken care of in a very professional manner. We wanted just to give you that little report, but we also want to let you know that we are planning to, in a very measured way, expand the program. There are a handful of other departments that currently do not have access to a P-card where we do believe that they would have a benefit. So not asking for any action because you, you gave us the authority to do that a couple of years ago, but we realized we hadn't given you an update on the P-card program. We thought we'd give you a quick update and we'd also tell you that we're looking at taking it to some other venues.
Questions? Noel?
How is payment authorized?
How is, it's a regular credit card. So here's, the situation is that we'll make a payment and then at the end of each month, in fact, coming up relatively soon, on the 27th, the people who have the cards get a piece in their email. We go in and we review all the transactions for that month. You can do it more often if you so choose. We go line by line through each of the transactions, we have to approve each transaction, and then in addition, we have to review the monthly statement. So there are several steps that the people who are in charge of those cards have to make sure that they go through the appropriate process and every receipt has to be submitted. And on the technology side of our, our gig here, we use the P-card quite often and I can tell you that it's really streamlined how we do things, but at the same time, you know, making sure that we have those invoices and receipts is critical because Lori Pryor, who manages that part for us, is on top of it and we go line by line and we check that we have every receipt and that it matches. So we've had some pretty good internal controls, Noel, about that. And I know Val Murdestorff, our Director of Finance, is just really pleased with that particular part and it's, it's also made sure that people understand that everything that we purchase, we have to have that invoice or that receipt.
Other questions?
It always helps to have someone who is in that position, having been a former auditor.
That is correct.
She is very, very conscientious about it in terms of, of making sure that everybody's doing all the pieces they need to do, their receipts are there for everything, and she absolutely will not let something go through without all the appropriate pieces that would make an auditor happy if they decide to pull that particular purchase and review it for an auditing review.
And it seems to me that, I was thinking about the audit too, that by expanding this to other departments, if anything, we'd be, it would be easier to keep track of some of these transactions and in terms of the documentation being consistent across departments.
It's very transparent, for sure.
Yes. Actually, much more than we have sometimes with pieces where we're trying to do a traditional piece and you're dealing with, you know, creating a purchase order and then sending that purchase order off and then generating an invoice and then that's passing back and forth between multiple hands and multiple approvals before it comes back. It really streamlines that process.
And the more that we get, the more vendors that we get to accept it, which most do, but there's a little bit of an effort to work with their departments to make sure everything's in synchronicity, but it is a tiered rebate system. So the more we spend, the higher, it's, it's not just a one-for-one, but the higher that we get, the more that we get back. And again, $5,000 is nothing to shake a stick at, so we're pleased to get it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. All right. We have no items for individual action at this time, so we are going to move on to items in the consent grouping. And board members, I'll remind you that there were, there was in your table file, some additional personnel point, items that were added to the consent grouping. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent grouping.
I would ask to remove the, the swim club agreement. I guess my daughter's been active in the swim club all year, so.
Ah, okay. All right. So we will have, treat that separately. So there is a motion to, well, actually, we don't need a motion to do that. We would just remove the item, the Northfield Swim Club Agreement from the consent grouping. All right. So I would ask for a motion to approve all other items in the consent grouping, not including the Northfield Swim Club Agreement.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, which includes items 2 through 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would now ask for a motion to approve the Northfield Swim Club Agreement.
Move it.
Moved by Noel.
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All those in favor of approving the Northfield Swim Club Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
And we have one abstention.
Abstention.
And any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are ready to move on to the items for information.
Really, the only item that you have in here is just to give you a little background on the upcoming staff workshops, which will be held on the four days, August 26th through 29th. And again, you'll see that we have a mix of activities, both in terms of training pieces and then also, we're going to be doing something new this year. And actually, Mary and the RTI coaches have taken every leadership role in this piece. We're going to be doing what's called Ready, Set, Go Day at the elementaries. And the idea being that instead of trying to wait until Thursday evening, as we have traditionally, and run our open house at that time, typically have a whole group of parents and a whole group of students trying to come together and sometimes pay fees and/or bring their supplies and/or see their room and do all the other pieces. The approach that they're going to be taking will be individualized so that each student has basically a time that they're to come with their parent. And during the time that they're there, there will be an opportunity for the parent and the student to meet the teacher, get a chance to visit the room and see where they're going to be, but then also a time that they'll actually get all of the, the initial assessments done so that we actually will assess each student in terms of their reading and math levels and structures so they'll be ready to go. And we'll deal with any other pieces that they need to get completed. And so the idea being that they get all the same benefits they would get in terms of the open house, but they would get them on a very individualized basis. We really think it's, it's got a very positive option for parents. And again, you know, we'll test it out and see how this goes, but this is something that I think our curriculum folks and our, our elementary staff said, we'd really like to try this and see if this wouldn't give us a much more powerful and beneficial opportunity for kids and parents to be introduced to their elementary age or the elementary classrooms and all of the other pieces that go with that. So that'll be what we're testing out. The other thing is that all of the teachers that are not regular classroom teachers are also going to be participating in the process and are going to help us in terms of the, the assessment pieces and the other kinds of orientation pieces so that it will relieve the teacher to spend more direct time with each student and each parent when they come in for their point of time. And Mary, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that? Is that pretty much?
That nailed it, yes.
And again, we just think it's a, it's a very powerful piece. But as you'll see with the other pieces, we've got opportunity for individual staff meetings at buildings. We've got, they will be working on the new language arts standards. They'll be looking at social studies training by grade levels and math training and opportunities for department-level meetings and also pieces with everyday math and other kinds of math training. The one thing that, as you know, we are going to be looking for the first time this year at new assessments that were given last spring in the English Language Arts area in terms of the MCAs. And they move now from the traditional MCA piece to an MCA that is based on the Common Core standards in English Language Arts. We are still waiting for the data on that. You know, I think, I think it's pretty generally believed that there will be a significant reduction in scores in terms of the first new year. And because the rigor level of these new tests is much higher and the length of the passages was longer, there's a lot of things that would have the tendency to make that happen. The piece we didn't do, which some other districts did, is we chose to wait a year in terms of the implementation of the computer-based test and stayed one year in paper pencil. And one of the things we're going to be discussing actually at cabinet tomorrow morning is, are we going to wait any longer or will this coming year, we'll be moving to the reading test in terms of moving all of that to computer-adjusted? Because it will, within the next year or so, basically, all the testing based on legislative action and state statute will all be computerized. And, and again, responding to what districts asked for, which was a quicker turnaround in terms of the data about how kids are performing. Right now, it's really been drawn out because they have been trying to work through all the pieces with the, the new assessments. So that'll be kind of a stay tuned moment as, as that comes through. But again, I think, you know, we try to stay very much on top of the new standards that are coming in. In this case, the, the new EFA standards that are tied to Common Core, new standards in terms of looking at social studies and other pieces as we move through the process and trying to always make sure that we're on track in terms of doing all the pieces that are in line with the newest standards. And it's been kind of a moving target because they've moved it pretty aggressively in terms of the, the amount of years before they actually come back and, and do updated new standards. And sometimes, they have actually done standards out of order, maybe sometimes more than just a few times. And that has, has also been an issue for us that it's, as it has been for either the district and the state, where they have made choices to, to move the standards process in different ways because they were trying to align with either something else that was going on in terms of the national standards or development or in terms of the Common Core standards. So all of that will be coming down the pike as we go forward over the next several weeks.
Very good. Before we move on to future meetings, I just wanted to take a moment to welcome Cheryl Hall to our board meeting. As you know, board members, if you want to come up to me. Earlier this year, we made some decisions to do some different things in terms of restructuring. And one of the pieces was that having a joint Director of Special Ed with Farbo with Cheryl Hall, which is the, has been the Director at Farbo and is now, as of July 1.
Right.
As of July 1. So welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have you onboard.
It's great to be back and thank you for the opportunity.
And we've been working her already hard, so.
Yes.
The, the, the great thing obviously is, I think most of you know, is that Cheryl and Gary have had a very long professional relationship and, and the fact that Cheryl actually was our Assistant Director of Special Education for a number of years before she went to Farbo. And so I think we've had a, a real good ability to make that transition begin and I think Gary and Cheryl are working very closely together to make sure that all of those pieces fit the way we want them to. And we're just very pleased with this as an opportunity to, again, be able to, to hopefully provide as good or even better service than we provided before, but also to do it in the most cost-effective way that we can make it happen.
Right. Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, we have future meetings Monday, August 26th, and then Monday, September 9th, after school begins. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Moved by Noel, seconded by John. All those in favor of attending the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.